First item is roll call.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman what?
Here.
Next item, the invocation led by Pastor Darryl Jones of Crossroads Church, followed by a pledge of business from Alderman Baman.
Let's ready to go. God, we begin the night by acknowledging you as Creator, giver of life, each and every one of us, and everything that we enjoy in life. And you've given us the opportunity to steward, manage, and take care of what you've entrusted to us. And so tonight is a great example of that. Leaders elected and appointed in our community to make decisions on behalf of our community in the best interest to all of our residents. And sometimes that's hard, sometimes it's challenging, and sometimes it's not rewarded very well. So I give you thanks for each of these representatives sitting before us that will work tonight for the betterment of the community. Given clarity, given discernment, and wisdom to make good decisions and to steward well what's been entrusted to them. Thank you again for a great evening, and just for an opportunity to be alive and the hope of tomorrow. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes there, no proclamations. Move on to citizens' participation. We ask the citizens who wish to address the board, come forward to the microphone and podium. Please give your name and address to the record. Anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to discuss the consent agenda.
I would like to approve the consent agenda.
Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Coleman. Any discussion? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on, seeing no previous business. Move on to new business. We have a sergeant promotion for William Stratton.
Mayor, members of the board, I'd like to introduce William Stratton. He's about over twenty years of experience in the state of Green Valley, Missouri, and has been selected for the state of the state during the sergeant. He'll take a little more of a role slot. He'll be returning this week to the board and do that. And he's special.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I do a family trick, too. Hi, no more new business, seeing no presentations or public hearings. Move on to ordinances.
Your Honor, the first ordinance, the only ordinance, is Bill B-18-08, first reading. An ordinance in Henry Chapter 700, a load of ordinance in the city of Green Valley, Missouri, pertaining to the banning of lead in the public drinking water system. First reading, Bill B-18-08.
I move that we accept Bill Number B-18-08 for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Totten to approve Bill B-18-08 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Drive a second. Second Alderman Baman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'm just going to refer this over to Rick Arroyo. This is just a updated standard for water quality.
So there's something called the Reduction of Lead Drinking Water Act. I think currently, right now, our ordinance, this is the, not the piping, but like the brass fittings that you may have with water pipe systems. It was like .8 percent is what was allowed. It's now .25 percent. So this is updating our municipal code to make sure that we meet that standard. So any questions?
Are we gonna have to take up all the, dig down to the line?
Most of the fittings that we currently have are .2 percent or less anyway, right now. So this is just more of a requirement that the industry pretty much has already met.
Okay.
The, for like regular pipes, it's already a .2 percent, which is actually lower than this requires. And so pretty much all the fittings are .2 percent or less anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first mayor. Next item is Resolution R-18-20. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Springstead, Inc. for a classification, compensation, and benefits study. Resolution R-18-20.
Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution 18-20 as read.
After motion from Alderman West to approve Resolution R-18-20. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we've been talking about this compensation study for quite some time. We put out an RFP for the project back in April and received three proposals. One from Springstead, Inc., which is what we are recommending, one from PayPoint HR, and one from Newport Group. Of the three, Springstead was the lowest, and in our opinion, for the money, the best bid. They were $17,800. PayPoint was right at $30,000, and Newport Group was $35,810. We visited with Springstead a little bit more about, after reviewing all of the RFPs, about the project and what our expectations would be from this. One issue that we have run into is that we obviously will be trying to expedite this, the project, but we want to make sure that we do it right. And what I had tasked the contractor with is a pretty tight timeline. So we're gonna be pushing to get the numbers back in time for budget. We will do the best that we can with that, but part of this whole program is to also come up with a pay plan and a strategy to implement any inequities that there might be. The first step of the program is that they'll actually come onsite and they're gonna do the project initiation, which means they'll meet with the department heads and some supervisory staff. They'll put together a position analysis questionnaire, so it's a survey that every employee will review or complete. And then they're gonna sit down with each department head and talk about the structure in their departments, and if they feel like they have any challenges or issues with the existing structure, and also discuss the classifications of specific positions. They can also do additional follow-up calls on it and surveys if they find something that's of interest to them, so they can conduct one-on-one interviews with employees as part of this if needed. Once they do the, they come up with the questionnaire, they'll do the classification analysis and the job analysis, is where we have the employees go out and do the survey. They'll also use this program that they have at Safe Systems, and it's systematic analysis and factor evaluation. And it's an actual copyrighted program that they go into to make sure that not only our employees have equity in the marketplace, but there's internal equity that's held so that you don't have salary compression or giant leaps in pay either direction that makes it unfair for any of the employees. As we work through that, we'll come up with the results and come up with updated job descriptions where need be. They'll give us up to three standard implementation options, so three different ways to get from point A to point B if there is a significant increase. They're also gonna give us a recommended grade assignment for each job class. So currently, we have ten different grades. Within those ten grades, we have, I believe, forty-nine job classifications for approximately sixty-five to seventy FTE, depending on what time of the year we have. So they'll, they're going to help us restructure that entire job classification and pay grade system. And then they will come and do a presentation to the Board of Alderman on their final findings. The deliverable will actually be a draft report, and we'll be able to continue to do the, use the Safe System moving forward to make sure that we maintain that internal equity amongst the employees in subsequent years as we update the program. I think this is a very critical, I know I'm probably hopefully answering all the questions before they even come up, I think this is a very critical foundational report to do for the city, because in the nine years that I've been here, we have not had an outside consultant or any type of specialist do a compensation study. I take that back, in 2010, we had a consultant come in and they helped the city clerk at that time draft a employee handbook, and they came up with the job classification update that we currently have now. What we have done historically is we would update the job minimums and the top end based off of any inflation or basically the economic conditions that surround us. And then on the third year, we would go back to the MARK report, which pulls salary data from all of the local agencies within the MARK region, which is, I believe, nine counties. The data that those studies contain is fantastic. The problem is that it's impossible, or it's very difficult to match up job to job from one city to the other. What we have is a permit technician here, might be a engineering technician, too, in Blue Springs. And so there is, it's always been difficult to match positions, but it also is very difficult to measure the fringe benefits, which is becoming such a big part of employee recruitment and retaining entities these days. So fortunately, that's one of the things that this study will look at, is those fringe benefits, and translate that into how competitive we are within the job market. So it's not just looking at paying our police officers X amount of dollars or public works X amount of dollars. It's the pay in addition to the benefits that they receive makes us competitive. Like I said, once we have the project complete, we'll be able to have the salary survey summary, job evaluation analysis for each position. We'll have the manual for the, on the use of the Safe Job Evaluation System. And then we will have ongoing discussion with the consulting team to make recommendations on any additional employee classifications or salary structures. They are right now saying that it'll take approximately six months from approval, which is why we have turned this around so quickly. The deadline for this was a week and a half ago, I believe. It was since the last board meeting. And so we wanted to expedite it to get board approval. That way we can move on with the project and hopefully shave a little bit of time off of that six months and get some numbers back in time to plug into the 2019 fiscal year budget. I will be happy to answer any questions if they still exist.
Any other questions or discussion?
I think you implied, but this is for the police officers, police staff internal.
Yes, every, every city employee.
You may have said this, Ryan, but so it will, it would, or they and their study will capture what kinds of entities, like similar cities, similarly sized to Green Valley, or they would collect data on a regional basis that would as close as they can match?
Yeah, so they will try to match it as closely as possible to our city size and to the public sector. So we're not gonna have to worry about competing with a similarly sized private sector company. Springstead has a pretty, pretty big presence in the KC metro area, but throughout the Midwest as well, from north to south, all the way through the Midwest. And so they have, for example, last year, they did a compensation study for the city of Lee Summit. Obviously, Lee Summit is a different circumstance, and so they, that's, those are cities that we compete for, but we're never going to be able to offer the same thing that Lee Summit can, or at least right now, we cannot. So they're going to take the regional data and they're gonna try to extrapolate as much as they can from similar sized cities located within our area.
Now, are they gonna make it competitive or beneficial, say like one officer goes ahead and gets his education, another officer has training, are they gonna make it to where somebody coming in off the street doesn't automatically get what they're getting?
One of the things that we'll look at in this is a step-type program like that, to be able to give officers or any employee for that matter credit for experience, but also make sure that the employees that have tenure at the city are not left in the dust because we are constantly upgrading our bottom end.
Yeah, but I mean, is there testing that will be done to evaluate some of those situations?
If any, I would say that the educational piece and the training piece of it will be part of the job description. So if we come up with a step program, say we have step one, two, and three, well, step number one may be just the basic qualifications. Step number two, if we use a public works employee, for example, step number two may be this employee has three years of experience in the field, and they have their water operator's license. Or if it's a police officer, they are a DR, a drug recognition expert, and those sort of classifications, that there is a reward for that that will be built into the scale.
Are we gonna put a deadline on doing these steps? Is there gonna be an incentive for them?
Most likely. That'll probably, that'll definitely be part of the discussion once we get the results to see how much we're going to, you know, what we have to increase just to become marketable. But that's an important part of making sure we're competitive.
Any else have anything? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, mayor. Next resolution is R-18-21. Resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Earl Madison Company, LLC for abatement services. Resolution R-18-21.
Mayor, I move we accept Resolution 18-21 as read.
I have motion from Alderman Headley to approve Resolution R-18-21. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Coleman. Any discussion?
What are they classifying as untapped property?
I will let Mr. Arroyo talk about this. This is just the annual agreement, or by annual agreement of the abatement contract.
Yeah, this is just the people who will go out and mow the grass or pick up the trash if we had a, you know, a situation for abatement. So they don't make a determination, that's the determination that the city makes, as far as whether or not somebody's in violation and we actually request that they go out and abate a property. So this is just a contract. Basically, it's a lawn mowing service or a traffic cleaning service is what this contract's for.
Well, now, I had a neighbor who has MS, and this year, he can barely walk, but he has finally found someone to rent the property because he was worried about getting, you know, fines and everything. And of course, I did make it note that Nichols needs to be mowed. But thank you, and that's what I was worried about, is something like that, if there was, I mean...
If anybody had an issue like that, if they just contact Ray and let them know. Ray actually has some resources where if we have some disabled people that can't mow their, mow their lawns, that he can put them in contact with them to get help to mow their property before we get to that point.
Okay, no, I found a gentleman, came and mowed on this other piece of property. I was pretty tickled with him.
And Earl Madison is currently our abatement services, and we've had no issues with them, and they've been pretty responsive when we've had to have them go out and abate a property.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, non-fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, mayor. Next resolution is R-18-22. It is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with NET Standard for Information Technology Management Services. Resolution R-18-22.
Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution Number R-18-22 as read.
After motion from Alderman Coleman to approve Resolution R-18-22. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to let Mr. Murphy introduce this and kind of give the background as to what has led to the discussion that led to this contract.
Yep, Mayor and Board, if you remember around budget time, well, it's probably gone back a couple of years, more than that, every year when we go through budget, we've talked about, you know, as we rely more and more on, you know, internet services and just the network as a whole, needing to kind of upgrade our approach. And this year, the board had approved the switch to Microsoft Office 365, as well as cloud-based storage. You know, right now, our backup storage is at the maintenance facility in James Rolo, so you can imagine if a catastrophic event, like a tornado that came through not that long ago, hit here, it would probably also hit the maintenance building, so that kind of defeats the purpose of the backup storage. So as we started looking into options as far as Office 365 and backup solutions, we had had a lot of discussions internally, and then also had those same discussions with NET Standard, who's been our provider for the last eight years. What we currently have is basically per month, we have a certain number of hours that we can use NET Standard's service, and that's what we had signed up for, you know, those eight years ago, and at the time, it worked pretty well. But as we've become more and more dependent on those type of things, the hourly limit was kind of a hindrance. We could have them start working on something, and then once the hours are up, then we basically have to go to a project, and then we're paying for a project. So they basically told us that they had kind of a new program called Clarity that could kind of come in and basically take care of all of that. So if we entered into an agreement with that, it'd be more of a 24/7 service to be able to handle any of those kind of issues, which obviously, for us being a relatively small-staffed city with the growing IT needs, that was definitely something good to hear. Our current IT GIS specialist, right now, he's basically, we're asking him to be a full-time IT and GIS person, and that's not fair to him or anybody else internally or externally. And when you look at the IT side of things, it's just constantly changing, and just having one person doing those things and trying to keep up with everything, it's not really a, you know, recipe to stay on top of things and catch items, or catch issues before they come up. And then also with that, you're spending so much time on the IT side that the GIS side can kind of fall to the wayside a little bit, and that's also an area that is constantly evolving. And then when you look at Microsoft Office 365, right now, what we run into is Ed is trying to help people on an internal basis if they have issues. They'll call and he'll go to them, but then you have to figure out kind of what version you're even on of Office, because we've got computers that are staggered, which is fine, but depending on which version you have, you're trying to explain to the person how to go through that path to fix that issue. So it, we basically spend a lot of extra time, and which time is money, on trying to fix these type of problems that wouldn't be any big deal, or it would be less of a big deal, if everyone was on the same platform, and if they had a person they could call. You know, right now, if Ed isn't in, then we kind of start going down the chart, then maybe the next call is to me, or maybe Rick. And again, that kind of just delays, you know, people being able to do anything, as Ryan's a third giggling. I can be an IT guy, don't worry. But basically, we've kind of just been piecemealing things, and we're, you know, every year-round budget, we try to come to you guys and say, you know, we think we need this piece, or we need this piece. But it's kind of hard to really look towards the future and plan ahead when you're trying to put out those small fires all the time. You know, we kind of talk internally, we basically, we're piecemealing our IT needs, and we don't do that with anything else. I mean, whether it's equipment, vehicles, even computers themselves. Try to plan ahead a little bit, and that's just harder and harder to do with the way things are changing. So at the end of the day, we were able to sit down with NET Standard, and we came to what we think is a good deal for us. Obviously, continuing with somebody that we already have is good. They know our system. We don't, we're not gonna have to worry about any downtime of somebody coming in and learning what we have, because honestly, it would probably take a little while, because we have what I would call kind of a unique setup in some areas, and it takes a little while to kind of figure that out. But because we had already budgeted for those things, when they came back with a price, we were kind of like, well, we could go put all of our, those items we were gonna budget for separately into this one contract and have one person that's in charge of it. And that would mean we're gonna have a project manager, or, it's not the right word, but a technology manager is the right word. One person that we can go to all the time to take care of our needs. They're gonna be able to report back to us on a regular basis of kind of the health of our system and be able to plan our needs out in the future. Because the last thing we want is to have a server or something go down, and then we come back to you guys and are, you know, asking for $20,000 out of the blue. Not that that still can't happen, but the odds definitely start going down if you are able to plan a little bit. But we think we've come to you with a good solution that can meet all of our needs for the rest of 2018. That's basically what we've already budgeted when you take those separate items. But with that, with NET Standard, I asked Ray Jackson and Bruce Kaufman to come and kind of give you guys a little overview of their Clarity program and what that's gonna mean for us.
Is your okay?
Yes.
I'm gonna keep it fairly simple. Not everyone likes to hear about the business and vice and all the technical stuff, so I think I just need, what we call, what's included in our fairies to go through the majority of what you'll be receiving. Now, the one piece that's not in here that we can treat as we like is the Office 365 piece. And what I'll tell you about that is that the benefit of going through a company like us, like NET Standard, with Office 365, is that we are honoring the same government pricing and structure as Microsoft would. Instead of having to be on phone with them, you still get the local support through us and know our different costs. And we are experts also in migrating your current email, so please know that we'll be with you every step of the way to make that a smooth transition. I am the senior technology sales exec for NET Standard. So I've sort of been quarterbacking this with Ken and Ryan and Ed. And Ray Jackson is our VP of Managed Services. So I think we'll just go through this list, maybe just speak to it briefly, and then Ray, if you'd like to highlight any things that you have inherent knowledge of their accounts. And by the way, KJ Miller is your dedicated technology manager. Thank you for pointing that out. He's really the tip of the spear, and actually, he's the first person on here. You always, or the first item on here. few minutes before we walked in, so we apologize if that happened. So I think it's okay. I'll just run through these real quick and then I'll have Ray speak to a few and answer any questions. Does that sound good? All right, so again, this one we call Clarity, it's our trademark term. We've been in business for twenty-one years and this is really the program we need with. And the benefit, besides everything that's included is again, it's, it's all encompassing. It helps you know that just we've got the IT part of what you're doing. It lets your people focus on what you do. It's unlimited, so unlike now where you are paying for just a few hours a month, there is no after this, whether it's our service desk you call into or email into or whether it's us coming onsite. Just keep in mind, this is an unlimited support model, that because you're a government structure and because they wish to work with you, we've tried to also make it easier. So to run through, you'll of course receive a dedicated technology manager as mentioned. We're going to continue monitoring your environment, your IT environment. We're going to provide security services. We will now provide online backups, which as Ken mentioned, is extremely, um, critical to any business, private, public sector, whatnot. If something was to happen here, you need to know that your data is protected through offsite means. And we're going to back it up locally, but we're also going to back it up from our type three data center. We have two locations in Kansas City. I'll take a quick minute to explain. The majority of our employees are down in Overland Park right near one hundred and thirty-sixty-nine, okay? But we also have the data center that's manned twenty-four seven, two thousand million lane, KTK, and that's where we'll be backing up all of your data. So if something would happen, catastrophic, maybe a cyber attack, you know, a server goes down, whatever, we've got you covered. And then of course, maintenance of warranties and licenses. This gets into a lot of the stuff that if you were to hire an IT person or IT team, they would handle, it's sort of a headaches of keeping your environment up and running and again, we've got this, so we can talk to that. Also the vendor, the hardware, the application management, that means any of the applications are currently running or you're going to make service provider. Those type of things that can sometimes cause problems, we're happy to spend our time getting on the phone with them to work it out, so again, you all can continue running the city. Automated reporting, we'll make that look very live. We can meet you or KJ Miller will meet you as often as you would like, just to talk about the health of your network, um, possibly any, any equipment that maybe is becoming end of life and we can help you make smart buying choices or things to bring to the Alderman meeting to see about purchasing. We really want to give you strategic guidance, okay, so you can make smart, long-term decisions. But we'll meet with you as often as you like, just to talk about even how many service calls we're taking and what those look like, so we can get to the root problem. We recently had a, had an issue with, with Mr. Hunt and Mr. Bannon, um, where they're having VPN issues. And yes, we can try to fix it and to be quite frank, we couldn't fix it right away because it was more of a root problem, so then we had to take a D for D, so it didn't continue happening. So we understand how frustrating that can be, right? Um, local twenty-four seven, three sixty-five service desk, everything is out of Kansas City. We don't offshore anything. Because we have our data center, we inherently, because of the type it is and how regulated it is, we have to staff it twenty-four seven, okay? So we truly are staffed, and these aren't people that can just reset passwords. We hire a higher caliber of IT support person. Um, in our world, it's called, you know, tier, there are different tiers, so these are tier twos enough. We basically employ tier two, tier three, and even tier four engineers at our facility, okay? Um, I had somebody call me once Saturday evening at four thirty on a Christmas Eve. I was parking lot, uh, parking, uh, helping park cars at my church. They called me, we fixed the problem. Actually, we couldn't get a hold of them right away, so the person I turned it over to at Net Standard at the data center, they called me back and said, hey, you have a number for this person, I can't reach him via email. So he went the extra step to reach my client and by the way, that client, they weren't even set to start till the following Monday, the twenty-seventh. So it really is a culture of, of client service at our company. And then ongoing strategic planning that I mentioned. We're not just a break fix IT company, okay? We're here to fix things when they break. But we want to meet you and I know in working with Mr. Hunt and Mr. Murphy, you all want to be, at least to picture I got painted, want to think longer term. You don't want to review this every year. So how can we help you make longer term, smart purchasing decisions and really set your stuff up so your system is safe, it's secure, and your employees' equipment works? That's really what we're here to do. So I probably gave a little more detail than I planned on each before I ask Ray to extrapolate on that. Any questions on any of those things, either items that are on here or items that you're curious if they're covered?
Will there be a point where we would maybe be able to update our password protocol?
Absolutely, that's going to, you know, that really kind of falls into the strategic planning, but we're going to make recommendations of the way you have, you know, to handle that meeting with a potential client and one of the observations I made was, you know, that is string setting, like I'm sitting here and, you know, pointing this and that string setting, you know, that's monitored still. You know, we don't recommend that password, we, we, we always want to get as complex as we can.
But also make it easy for users to remember, so, you know, we're going to, we're going to make some of those recommendations.
Also, we're going to give you what, what you opt to do, but we're going to make strong recommendations as frank. And the frequency and what they, and what they change, nobody wants changing a password, but you really need to change it quicker.
From the, from the standpoint of the environmental monitoring of that, or the environment monitoring, that from the desktop all the way back up through the network to you guys?
Yeah, desktop, um, servers, um, your, your network equipment, um, we're monitoring for variety things, uh, up-down, uh, we'll monitor for services that are running, uh, you know, um, particularly around a server, uh, applications that you need in order to perform your job day-to-day, going to make sure those are running. We're going to be monitoring that, we're going to be looking for congestion, up-down, going to monitor the, you can't monitor that, temperature really, but we're going to be monitoring servers, switches, we're going to be monitoring the temperature. That kind of really comes into play in a server closet, oftentimes there can be trouble that you don't even know until somebody calls in and says, hey, I can't access something and it's because you had a thermal shutdown because it got hot. We're going to be monitoring for that. Um, also using the same tools for patching, patching, this is really covered, covered very effectively, but we're going to, we're going to make sure not only the Microsoft patches done on, on workstations, but also, um, on the servers and then, um, and then third-party application patches. People often forget about Adobe Flash, Java, you know, Firefox, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to make sure all of those are patched as well. And then in that, in that automated reporting, one of the things we're going to have in, including that report is, and we're seeing a problem with missing patches. Most commonly, the reason patches are missed is people don't, don't reboot their machines. We'll be having those conversations without saying, we need to reboot our machines. We're going to find that.
Yeah, one thing I haven't mentioned is, we have, as we do what's called an IT assessment, it's no cost, it's no obligation. We already have a pretty good picture of your environment because like you mentioned, you've been a client for eight years. We came back, you know, we just didn't want to throw a member out here to do a great rate. We want to make sure we're being thorough. So we, we did count and we verified Ed of your environment, for instance, there's seven servers, there's three physical, there's four virtual, fifteen other network devices. So we know about all of those and have a, a pretty strong, a knowledge already about those. And that not only helps us price, and if you scale back, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go with price and go, certainly. But we also give you a predictable number and that's why I'm very pleased, unlike most of our competitors, where we often give them a number. Is anyone to have a question? What other questions?
I got, I got one more. Um, you brought it up, and, and I know, Ryan, you and I talked and Ken, you and I talked about the third-party software is just going to, I know you don't deal directly with ENCODE, but you'll, you mentioned something about doing any of the extra carrying fee that you needed. So for instance, you do some patching on the servers that the ENCODE system is running on and the patches don't agree with the software.
Right.
You'll back them, back them out, work with Kathy, whoever, for the, the supplier ENCODE and deal with that.
Yeah, so that's part of the vendor management, we're going to work with that, that application vendor to, to troubleshoot, understand, and then, and then back that the, the appropriate patches with the backup. So we will push, you know, a lot of folks just use the age tools to push that patch. You know, so Microsoft, you can just check the box and say, keep my machine updated. You know, you're familiar with other applications on your machines, you're, you know, you're, even your Androids and iPhones these days, you can say, I'm actually updating. We're not going to update them majorly with the application, we're going to update them with the third-party piece of software that we put on there. The reason we update them that way is if we do find that one application that's causing a problem with the vendor, we can just click and remove it from everybody simultaneously to, to, we can undo the problem.
Ray, backups are so important, is there anything more you'd like to add?
No, I think you've covered pretty well. So we, uh, you know, Bruce mentioned, we're going to have outside of plants, we're going to provide a plant, we'll bring that plant, some time, we'll back up to that plant. The reason we back up also is really to keep it restored. You know, if you're missing a file, delete a file inadvertently, it becomes corrupt and you need to restore that, you don't want to leave hours for us to re, re, restore across the internet. So we're going to have that appliance here so we can restore it. But then, we send a copy every night back to the current data center, so we have an offset copy as well. So now you've got the redundancy, you're talking about, you know, from a country, you know, you lose that local copy, we back it, we store the copy in the back, in our data center.
And even our backups, we manage those, we, we don't just wait for a call when something is corrupt. We've got reports, hopefully even there with us, but we've got people to know if something's not backing up successfully. We walk into numerous companies and they think this is the greed of iPhones being backed up, or if I, if I had a good backup system, we'll know that, we have people, so we have people at the estate that will monitor that.
And then we're going to figure it out since that's true, because the backup one is going to be restored. I can't count them, I can't count, um, on, on all my digits, the number of times, uh, I've had to call to have good backups when we, when we were talking to them about IT services and we just take a page and we put it in the restoring. So we're going to pass the restore on our, our basis, when I can.
We also believe that by going off three sixty-five, your data footprint, your total amount of data will come down somewhat if we bring down that price because we price it per terabyte. So we're always looking for things like that to, you know, turn down, especially if you all make a good value, but we cover that, we cover that in pretty thoroughly with Ed and I. What other questions? Because listen, we, we're half a happy business, we want them to give tremendous value, we don't want to pitch this in any way. We believe that it's a great solution, but we want you to feel like it's a certain value for you. So whether it's the Clarity Managed Services, whether it's the online backups, or even often three sixty-five and how all that looks, what other questions can we answer? Please.
Are you involved in the hardware purchases also?
Yes, so the, that online strategic planning, we're going to help out with budget, annual budget and make recommendations of that, uh, of what hardware to purchase and we can procure that, uh, procure the hardware.
It's not, it's not really a huge profit center for us, there's other IT providers that they make their money in desktops and servers and all that. We are part of the same group, we'll achieve a different value, but we'll make strategic decisions, whether it's a underlying firewall or server, or hey, maybe we don't need this system or server anymore, anymore we can, we can do that to survive. We can have what's best for you, so you're not just buying it. And that's probably one of the advantages of having, you know, we've got about eighty-five employees, but just having a library, a system that we did, so if it's a specific application, there's a good chance we have knowledge about it or we'll find out, we've got big enough speed to do that. Um, so we're not just default saying, yes, providing off of a server, maybe that's not, that's not the smart.
Anything else? All right, thank you. If no one has anything else, any additional discussion, uh, on fair please say aye. All votes same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. Resolution R eighteen dash twenty-three is a resolution by the Board of Alderman City of Gray Valley authorizing the installation of a streetlight near two oh nine Valley Drive. Resolution R eighteen dash twenty-three.
I move that we accept resolution number R eighteen dash twenty-three as read.
I have motion Alderman Totten to approve resolution R eighteen dash twenty-three. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Coleman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just a, a new request that Mr. Royo sent in, uh, to Casey Pienel. Let you guys, uh, if you have any questions, you can answer them.
We had a resident make a request for a new streetlight. Um, as some of you may know, we have a policy in place that includes a petition and it requires a certain distance between an existing streetlight as well as, um, making sure that the property owners in the actual vicinity where the new streetlight would be is accepting of having that streetlight there. And so this particular streetlight, um, it's been a while that it was requested, but Casey Pienel has gotten back with us as far as the engineering side of it is concerned and the installation, and, um, it does meet the requirements of that policy.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, non-fair please say aye.
Aye.
All votes same sign.
Six zero, Mayor. The next two resolutions are R eighteen dash twenty-four and twenty-five respectively. They are resolutions by the Board of Alderman City of Gray Valley, Missouri, appointing Justin Tyson and Shay Bass to the Gray Valley Planning and Zoning Commission for two-year terms for resolution R twenty-four, twenty-five respectively.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number R eighteen dash twenty-four and R eighteen dash twenty-five as read.
I have motion Alderman Stratton to approve resolutions R eighteen dash twenty-four and R eighteen dash twenty-five. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, these are two applicants that we received, uh, for the position, so I will, uh, let Rick answer any questions about them if you have them.
I think we'll make them come forward and give...
Handstand.
They're both acting. No, I, you don't have to come, you don't have to come forward. For anyone, anyone having any...
Stand and acknowledge him.
Yeah, uh, Justin, I'm sure everyone knows anyone stands and, and Shay's back, he's been coming to our meetings for a while, so he, anyone have any questions for either of them, I think they'll both be great fit. All fair please say aye.
Aye.
All votes same sign.
Six zero, Alderman Mayor. Thank you.
Next up, please, Senator's Court.
I need your report, your honor, thank you.
Next up, please, the Minister of Staff's Court.
Mr. Mayor, I will start with, uh, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, I have a few things. Uh, first, you know, a, a meeting or two ago, uh, I had reported that Shannon and myself, um, we're really close to an agreement with Oates Transit and we're happy to say that, um, we did come to an agreement with them and we will be starting that program on June first. Um, so it will be for, uh, Gray Valley residents sixty-five or older or eighteen to sixty-four, uh, if you have a disability. Um, and that transportation will be provided Monday, Wednesday, Friday from ten AM to two PM. And that does allow for some pickup time prior to that, actually an hour before and an af, an hour after. Um, as I said, they'll be limited to, uh, trips inside the city limits of Gray Valley and Blue Springs with a cost of only one dollar per, uh, one-way trip. Um, and then some other things that they can do if, if somebody's going to be a, a rider, quite often they can buy cards that will, basically you just pay one time and get, you know, a card that will give you ten trips. Um, there's no money saving in it, but that way you're not having to come up with a dollar each time, they can just punch your ticket. Um, and Oates will be handling all of that scheduling, so residents can just call, um, up to two weeks in advance to schedule, uh, that trip. And there's other options if you know you have something like the second Wednesday of every month, um, they can actually plug you in and, um, and have that recurring appointment. Um, we had, uh, Sarah Davis, who's the regional director from Oates, come to the last senior luncheon and speak to them and hand out flyers. Uh, we'll be putting things out on social media. Um, and we've talked to, um, the new newspaper that will be coming to town here at the, the start of June, uh, to get an article in there, uh, which will go to every, uh, resident in Gray Valley. And then I think in July, we'll come back with, uh, an insert in the water bill, uh, explaining it a little more. But it's been a long time coming, but I think it's going to be a really good, um, affordable option for residents. Um, so if you have any, and I think I put, uh, Teresa put flyers, uh, for you up there and anyone in the audience, there's flyers on the back table as well. Um, share it with anybody that you may think, uh, uh, could use that service. Um, so if you have any, and I think I put, uh, Teresa put flyers, uh, for you up there and anyone in the audience, there's flyers on the back table as well. Um, share it with anybody that you may think, uh, uh, could use that service. And then, I had two things to report on the Parks and Rec front, as Shannon Davies was not able to come. Um, also up there on your, uh, in front of you should be pictures, and those pictures are, uh, picnic tables and shelters. Uh, there's three of them and they are at the Butterfly Park Trail. Um, and I believe two of them are actually handicap accessible, I know at least one. Uh, but this is something that Parks and Rec, uh, the park board, um, had worked on, and it was a, a budgeted item. Um, ended up using a local contractor to make the frames, uh, as a cost savings, because we quickly learned if you just go out to buy the complete thing, it's, uh, pretty expensive and doing three of them would be nearly impossible. We basically could have done one for what we ended up doing three for. Uh, but the Parks and Rec staff did a great job. They finished those up in the middle or first part of last week, um, but they look great. Um, so if you're out there, that allows for, you know, right now, we had a couple of benches out there, but once you start walking around the trail, everything's, you know, fairly young, so there's, it's not like there's any shady trees or anything like this, so this gives a, a nice spot for people to be able to go and, whether it's have a picnic or just take a break, um, keep them out there. And the only other thing was, uh, Shannon wanted to mention that the pool would be opening, uh, Saturday, May twenty-sixth at twelve o'clock. So hopefully have some good weather to start out the pool season and, um, everything should be ready to go.
And, uh, Mr. Royo?
Just wanted to make you guys aware and remind you that Saturday, June second, we have these flyers, is our spring cleanup. And the two days before that, the thirty-first and the first, is the pickup for the seniors. They just need to call our Public Works number, the eight-one-six-eight-four-seven-zero-zero-nine-one, um, before May fifth to get on the list for staff to go pick that, those materials up. So, uh, I want to let you guys make your aware. Um, also, I know, Mr. Mayor, you asked about the Creekside Village situation, and so I did go back and, and look at the, uh, kind of the timelines of what we had done up to this point. And we had had multiple complaints back in last year, early last year, April, to be, uh, exact, and we had been in contact with the management company, which is out of Blue Springs, which is not the owner. And so we had contacts with them about getting the alleyways, um, at least the approaches because the curbs were failing and we weren't really able to do the curbs without the asphalt behind it being repaired. And so, that process had gone on for quite some time, essentially, um, back in September of last year, we were to the point of, um, because, you know, they were contacting us, it wasn't as if they were ignoring us, but, um, had to do with getting, you know, money, getting, um, bids on what it would take to do it. And so, it wasn't until September of last year, we started sending out the final notices that they were, uh, in terms of property maintenance code violations. Uh, they did eventually, um, asphalt several of those areas that we requested them to do. It's not perfect, um, but they didn't finish those until like the end of October, early November of last year. So this year, we have on our schedule for curb repair, um, four locations, um, in the Creekside Village area off of Deer Creek and Clear Creek and Wolf Creek to do some curb repair, um, along where those alleys meet and a couple other areas, along with some sidewalk work as well. Um, I know there's still some issues in regards to the, the rest of the alleyways as far as maintenance and, um, but as far as the right-of-way portions are concerned, that's where we're at.
Okay. So we will be doing some curb repair this year.
Correct.
Alley's, there's, Mr. Cook, have you heard back from them at all regarding, I know there's questions about the alleys too and...
Short answer, yes, I did hear back after the last meeting. I contacted, uh, Jonathan Zur to ask what progress, if any, he's made. Short answer, there's none. Uh, they're trying to get an opinion from somebody, uh, tell us or tell them whether or not they have anything they can convey, because as we sit here today, we don't know who owns it, which means we don't know how they convey it to us, if we take it or if they dedicate it. It's kind of one of those issues, chicken or the egg. At some point, somebody's going to have to probably file some kind of an action in Circuit Court for declaratory judgment, quiet title, whatever you want to call it, to figure out. A, do they have the authority? A, who owns it? B, uh, once we determine who owns it, how do, how does that entity convey to you, the city, if the city wants it? And C, what happens if the city says, "We don't want it." Because we don't feel comfortable with the way the chain of title is going. The, uh, I, I know you don't want to get into the detail, because there, there are a lot of details going on, because what concerns me is five years from now, if the city does something and then a property owner comes back and makes a claim against the city for taking his or her property, we didn't have their right to do it, and we get some kind of inverse condemnation action. So, literally, what we're, what I've been thinking about is getting every, if we do something, if you do something, getting every property owner currently owns property in that development, to, to sign off on it and sign waivers and releases against the city, um, so that we don't have to defend against a, a claim in the future for compensation. You took my property, you didn't have any authority, you trespassed on my property, uh, whatever they come up with. That's more than you wanted to know.
That's right. So we just need to, we're basically just waiting on their attorneys still?
And I've got it on my calendar to, to, uh, to tickle him just to make sure. Yeah, I don't think he knows what to do either, frankly. And I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, have one thing that I wanted to go over. The last board meeting, you asked Chief Starbuck, uh, and I to look at some different options for police advisory committees for commissions. And the research that I did, it essentially came up with two different, um, styles that you could go with. If, if you want a true advisory committee, um, that's going to be a police advisory or a police, a public safety commission type, uh, uh, group. And what they're going to look at is life safety issues. They're going to, uh, be kind of the, the liaison to the community. Um, they'll meet, discuss, uh, along with the, the staff, they'll meet, uh, and discuss public perception, crime trends, uh, traffic safety, various safety hazards, uh, and then also the needs or time and performance data of, of the PED or our public safety. Uh, groups like this are usually about six to nine people in size, uh, and they can meet, you know, anywhere from monthly to most of what I've seen is quarterly and, uh, as needed, if more frequently. I think the other type of group that you could go with, uh, which I don't know if this, if this is part of, would satisfy both of the, the needs that you're looking into right now, would be a public safety task force. And that, uh, group doesn't just specifically look at ongoing public safety needs, they get together for the express purpose, uh, to identify needs within, uh, the police department and support, uh, initiatives to, uh, get increased revenues, i.e. leading into the public safety sales tax that you've, you've mentioned a few times. Uh, a group like this would do the research, um, to find out what those needs are. They would make a, uh, they probably have some sort of proclamation or resolution that they would pass, making a recommendation to the Board of the Al, the Board of Alderman, uh, about any sort of sales tax initiative. And then, once, uh, the board decided to take action, if they placed, uh, ballot initiative on the, or if they put, uh, language in, on the ballot to support a sales tax, uh, they would then become a, um, uh, more of a, the education piece of, now, um, the, the campaign committee, uh, portion. So their job would be to go out and educate, um, folks on the, the initiative. I can tell you, a quarter cent, um, sales tax, uh, just looking at the trend that we're on right now, in twenty nineteen, a quarter cent sales tax would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, to the police department. A half cent, four hundred and sixty thousand, and then a full cent would be nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, based off of the police department's current, uh, salaries and their personnel expenses. They have an annual budget of about one point two million dollars. So, uh, if you look at just a quarter cent sales tax, that, uh, provides, uh, a pretty sizable revenue, uh, to, you know, the, the area that we're, we're struggling with. You can also use it for, uh, equipment patrol needs, and that's, that becomes the part of this public safety sales tax oversight committee after the fact. They then become a, uh, citizens group that serves, uh, you know, almost as a, uh, an overseer of the tax spending, uh, to make sure that what it was approved for by the residents is what it's being spent for. Uh, so with that, we have several different directions that we could go with it. Um, I would just await further instruction from you.
Would the, I mean, the first group you talked about though couldn't really take on the responsibilities of that?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, what it can...
I mean, we, I, I would definitely want, you know, this group to make a recommendation to this board as to yes or no, if we need one. And the second part is I would definitely like them to oversee it at, you know, at the end and make sure that, you know, the money's going where it's supposed to, you know, kind of like Parks Board does, like recommendations to us and on budget expenses and things like that.
Yeah. Very similar to, to what we did with the EDC. We started out, uh, with an EDC task force that got together, and obviously the public safety sales tax would move forward a lot quicker than that, uh, but they met until they actually set up the five oh one C three, then assembled the board of directors, opened the, the, the EDC, uh, as, as a not-for-profit organization. Uh, in this situation, you could, you could assemble a, um, a public safety commission, uh, that could have multiple arms. The, the main objective could be, you know, the, the oversight, uh, steering community relations for the police department, uh, but they could have a subcommittee or they could just in-whole support the sales tax initiative and research into that. So it, it never, you know, changes from task force to education to commission. It could just start out as a commission and remain that way.
Now, is this something we need to establish by ordinance or resolution or...
I would establish the, yeah, I would establish the commission by, uh, ordinance, yes. Yeah, I would, I would set bylaws, membership, uh, by ordinance, yeah. Um, unless you would object or, or have any other input on that, Mr. Cook?
No, I, I agree with you on that, particularly when we're establishing something, then we're going to have to have a structure to go for.
What's the board's, um, is something we, the staff move forward with and... Is this something that we could get together by, vote by June sometime, I think?
Well, since the next meeting's June.
Not that.
Uh, I would say probably July-ish. I mean, we have, our next meeting is actually June eleventh, and then, um, we're going to have quite a few folks out of the office, uh, for vacation, me being one of them. I will, uh, be absent for the last two weeks of June, or May, sorry.
I think if we could get it going in July.
We might can bring back the board in July.
Okay. Do you want to look at several different structures or do you want staff to...
I think staff makes, I think, have you got, you guys look at the structure you think, I mean, because you're, you know, you're going to be the ones working with, I mean, you make a recommendation to us on what you think the structure should be and we can go from there. If it hasn't emphasized, you agree with what, you know, the bylaws and things of the type, you make a recommendation to us on those.
Okay.
I, I do have a question. When we, when we talk about, uh, public safety sales tax, if I recall correctly in previous discussions, the idea would be if this was passed, that that portion of our current levy would roll backward?
Yeah, you should put a... I, I, I mean, that's the recommendation I would make, if you put a vote back on it.
Yeah. I want to go about what the actual line item in the budget is versus what those, what that sales tax might look like. Would we endeavor to target that sales tax rate to offset those costs?
So, I guess that's a fundamental question that the board needs to answer, is are you, do you want to, are we looking at increasing revenues for public safety or are we looking at replacing revenues for public safety? What I presented tonight would be a increase, uh, obviously coming up, uh, before we know it, as we're starting, uh, budget, uh, next month, we'll be making some recommendations on, uh, the sales tax levy, or I'm sorry, the, the property tax levy. The recommendations that we are considering right now and what our plan is over the next, what we've been working towards over the last five years and what our plan is for the next three years, will be completely independent of any additional sales tax from a public safety, uh, sales tax initiative.
And I think I know the answer to that, so I'll ask it anyway. What's the possibility of having all of this come together with the salary subsidy that we're talking about? Maybe have that, that piece to know if, if we need to look for additional funds to maybe potentially possibly offset a, a, a potential salary need or gap? What's the possibility of tying all these pieces together?
I think we can, so we could have, we can have the numbers, uh, everything in place, um, in principle by then. Obviously, if we're getting numbers back for, from the compensation study, uh, in September or October, uh, we would be too late, um, to really get out ahead of it and, and push a, um, November sales tax initiative, I would imagine, unless we can get this, we feel like, yeah, this isn't a November of eighteen item. So, I think we can have a plan to get...
You look at April nineteen, the earliest.
Uh, for, for the year twenty nineteen. And I think based off of what's the, the, uh, the recommendation on the levy, the property tax levy for twenty nineteen, um, we'll be able to know if we're going to be able to further roll it back in future years. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I mean, it's all unknowns, but, you know, but we're trying.
I mean, ultimately, what I'd like to do is raise the funding for the police department, but at the same time, you know, roll back the property tax levy, but not to maybe as great as what's levied we approved for the sales tax would be.
A net, a net increase of some amount.
Yeah. So I mean, you're getting more money for the police department, but at the same time, you are able to roll that property tax back a little bit.
How many, uh, police officers are there supposed to be in this city?
Six hundred and seventy-one.
Police officers?
Oh, man. Uh, it depends on, you know, who you look at. For example, Liberty, uh, Liberty, Missouri touted, uh, during their, their sales tax initiative, that they were one of the lowest staff. They had less than one officer per thousand, uh, residents up there. I mean, right now, we are at, uh, about, I'd say we're probably about two, where are we, chief? How many patrol officers do we have?
We're, we're fully, it would be twenty-four.
But that includes detectives and...
Patrol or...
Yeah, patrol. Yeah.
Patrol, you have, uh...
Fourteen. So, so we're just above one police officer per one thousand, uh, population, which ranks us, uh, in, in the lower ranks of Kansas City. Uh, Liberty has about point seven officers per, per thousand. No, I actually, I, I believe we're actually lower than Liberty. Um, Lee Summit has one point five officers per thousand. Uh, if we go off the patrol number of fourteen officers, then we have approximately one officer per eleven hundred residents.
That's including sergeants, fourteen patrols, you know.
That makes them less census over...
This is two thousand five. Um, uh, it's, it's estimated census numbers based off of the twenty fifteen, uh, MUCR or MUCP, the Missouri Uniform Crime... the Missouri Uniform Crime Reporting Program. So basically, where our, our, our studies come out every year, that say Green Valley's, you know, one of the safest communities within the region, these numbers come from that same, same area. So I'm trying to look for just quickly a comparable. Excelfior Springs, they have eleven thousand three hundred people, residents. They have twenty-two officers. Liberty has thirty thousand, they have forty officers. Sugar Creek has three thousand three hundred people and they have seventeen officers. North Kansas City has four thousand three hundred people and they have thirty-three officers. So you can see it's a, it's a wide array of how many officers you have staffed within your community. But this is, as part of that, that initiative, these are the numbers that I would go, that, that's, we need to go through and update and find out where we really do fall.
I think the first step is we get, go from there and then have them make the recommendation to us on, if we need it, if we do need it, how big it should be. At the same time, make, make the recommendation to us too on how much we should roll back here and increase here, so.
One question, would you like representation from the Board of Alderman on the?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
I have a question. You were talking about the task force and you said approximately nine people. How would those people be selected for that?
It's, it would be by mayoral appointment, most likely.
Similar to probably what we do for Parks Board or?
Apply for the position, yeah.
Come for us, we have to approve them. Likely for PME or Park.
We'd put out, we'd put out information saying that we're, you know, soliciting or recruiting for, you know, volunteers for this commission. Get a list of volunteers and then the entire board could look, review it and vet the list and come to an agreement on the, the folks that are going to be represented.
So how, what would the mix of this, of this task force be? Would that be from the community, from?
It would be within Green Valley city limits is what I would recommend. If it's, if it's going to be a public safety commission for the city, that we limit it to city residents or business owners. There's, there's a lot of situations where we may have a, a local business owner that lives in an unincorporated area. Those are all things that we can come back with the recommendation to let you guys decide if there's a specific.
What's the task force that's actually going to be?
Ideally, what we would like to see is representation spread out equally among, among the wards. So depending on how many people we have, we, we try to, you know, instead of everybody being at-large members, you have folks from Ward one, two, and three. Okay, I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next up is Board of Alderman reports and comment. Alderman Stratton?
Nothing to report.
Alderman Cotton?
Thank you for the street light. I, I had put in a request a while back.
Alderman Coleman?
Yeah, I had someone come up to me and ask me what the size of, the engine size is, that is legal to drive without tags on the streets. And I forgot what that is to.
Forty-nine cc?
Well, I was saying it was under fifty. And, and is there an age limit for that? For anything that is under fifty cc's?
I'd have to review the ordinance on that, if I'm going to look at, maybe it's a little, it may not.
Okay. If you, if you wouldn't mind doing that, I would appreciate it because there's some kids that are riding some little motorbikes that some residents are a little concerned about, so. Thank you, chief. The other thing I, there's a couple of things that I would like the board to address in, in the near future as far as meetings are concerned. One of them is our wonderful logo. Like to bring that back up again and kind of readdress that at this time. And the other is, I'd just like to get more information as to our charter, our, our status as a city and whether it, it makes sense to change to a different type of, I don't know if it's a charter or what it's called, but.
Yeah, it's a constitutional charter.
Yeah, if we could just get more information to see if, if this is the right timing to do something about that. And then the last thing is, I, I just wanted to congratulate Ken and Shannon on, on getting the votes here because you don't even know how much the, the seniors really are excited about that. So thank you guys for your efforts. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Alderman Hedley?
Nothing major to report, I just want to thank chief and his staff and Ken and, and they're getting back to me with a number of the questions I've chafed down about, and sort of things.
Alderman West?
I think this is a perfect addition to Butterfly Park. You all should really be congratulated. This is beautiful.
Here's Will, I'm going to say, good job, Norm.
Beautiful.
Alderman?
Yeah, just a couple of things. On the, an update from the school district, the bids for addition of the high school came in. And I think they are very pleased with how those bids came in and the ability to move forward with that project. So I think we'll see some, some activity starting up around there pretty soon. And I, I understand too, that because of how well the bids came in, that they're also able to move ahead with a, a second phase of that, that would also allow some improvements as a footmark here regarding some retreat proceeding capacities.
All right. Next up, Mayor's report. I just have a couple of things here we need to take care of. The first thing is, we need to appoint a mayor pro temp for this coming year. So I'll entertain a motion then to nominate Mayor Pro Temp?
I'd like to nominate Chris Bannon.
I have a motion from Alderman Coleman to make Chris Bannon as mayor pro temp. I have a second. Second, Alderman Hedley. Any discussion? Any and none, all seriously say aye.
Aye.
All both the same sign? All right. Congratulations. I told, I told her if you wanted it, that the next time there's a larger meeting, that's going to be the first one I missed, so. Uh, next, a couple of items then is our, every, we look at our, our board appointments, what, you know, liaisons we will have. And I've talked with a few of you, Yolanda, I didn't talk with you, because I just figured. Stay with EDC if that was okay. So I have Yolanda stay on EDC, Alderman Bannon is going to stay on with the school. Uh, Alderman Hedley. I didn't put you on anything else, Coleman, because I figured you were busy with other stuff. Uh, Alderman Hedley is going to move to planning zoning. Uh, Alderman Cotton. And community development from time to time. And then Alderman Stratton will be Parks and Rec. So she'll do Parks Board.
So I get to pass out tickets, I got a few I'd like to give to.
You can probably pass out some code violations, talk to Rick. Uh, that is all I have for reports. We do have a need for an executive session for.
Yes, for.
Personnel?
Yeah, personnel.
For personnel? So I would entertain a motion then to adjourn an executive session for personnel? Second, Alderman Coleman. Any discussion? Any and none, all seriously say aye. All both the same sign? Alderman Stratton? Alderman Cotton?
Yeah.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Hedley?
Yeah.
Alderman West?
Yeah.
Alderman Bannon?
Yeah.
All right, we'll adjourn the executive session.